We're ready.
So, I need to act like I'm done, I'm done?
Please stand for the pledge and remain standing for the prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the many blessings that our community has. And we pray for those who are in the offices that now be taking over and governing this community, county, and also the country, that they'll make the decisions that are always in the best interest of this community and the state, all in the United States. We're glad that we have the freedom to speak up and vote for those who oppose our set of values, even if they differ from these leaders. Heavenly Father, please bless the men and women in the city government, state and federal government, all the elected officials, and those who put themselves in harm's way, like law enforcement, firefighters, and EMS. We are so thankful we have these in our community. In your name we pray, amen.
Jan, would you take roll call, please?
Dan Vincent.
Here.
Bob Leahy.
Here.
Jim Huffer. Tim Heiss.
Here.
Chad Spence.
Here. All right, trust to have a chance for you to consent agendas presented, any changes, corrections? If not, an entertaining motion?
Motion that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
We have a first and a second.
A second.
All those in favor of accepting the consent agendas, say aye. Opposed, same sign. Department reports, we talked about before we got started here, the speed limit change. Out on 28th starts a Jackson Pike coming into town to pass Pizza Hut. So, that's a change, it'd be 40 miles an hour all the way to Pizza Hut. And one thing I like about it is hopefully the semis will slow down coming into town. Because that's, it's always been truck.
As long as there's no engine braking.
Yeah, yeah. So.
We've got ordinance over. We've never got signs put up.
I was gonna say, there's no signs up anyway. I hear it all the time.
Then also, the back truck, we are going to be putting it up for, we have several people that are, we have three people that are interested in the back truck. We're gonna take some closed bids, give them till Friday. And we got a minimum bid of, I believe, like $12,000, $12,000 on that. So, the new back truck will be available probably next week. I think they're going to Streeter, Illinois on Monday. And then, then from there, they think it's gonna be shipped over to the dealer. They're gonna get a chance to finish up going down the assembly line. So, it's kinda cool for the Robin's guys. Gonna do some work along the creek banks out at the cemetery. Get some washout there, we're gonna put some mesh material down and some larger rocks to preserve the east side of the creek bank there. So, Jan, do you have any?
Um, yeah.
Oh, you wanna talk about, you wanna definitively say?
I thought, because I wasn't ready.
Well, I'll talk slower. Thursday, January 2nd, special meeting for council. You'll get sworn in by, oh, we gotta make sure we invite the judge.
About 6:00 P.M.
Yeah, 6 o'clock.
6 o'clock on Thursday.
Yep. You wanna invite the judge, she'll swear you in or swear at you. And what else are you gonna bring up tonight?
Well, you were talking about this, this thing about Cooley, or not Cooley, well, Cooley's gave us the bid.
Yeah.
That stuff.
Oh, yes.
But we were gonna wait, I thought you said.
Next, did not do it until next summer.
Yeah, but they'll have to, okay.
Yeah, okay. Well, what is the bid? I was going to finish that work up now.
I've got the numbers here, probably the, the two bids were, Ray was basically $20,700 in Cooley Construction, or Cooley Contracting, was $16,350.
Okay.
And that's for what?
Putting mesh material down.
Oh, in the cemetery?
Cemetery bank.
Just continuation of what you were talking about.
Stop erosion on that. And it's just, just the east bank.
Jumped topics there, same topic.
The east bank on both sides of the bridge.
So, it's $16,350?
$350, and we talked about.
Delaying it till summer.
Delaying it till summertime, so that they don't go in there this time of year.
Right, right.
Potential high water, due to spring.
Yeah, tear things up, tear up graves or anything like that.
Winds are quit raining about the end of June.
Yeah, and then the.
Eventually, yeah.
The funding will come out of the non-reverting fund for the, so. Why don't we go ahead and just go ahead and get that ready to pass? If there's no other questions or comments, I'd entertain a motion to accept Cooley's bid, to get that locked in for $16,350.
I will motion that we approve the aforementioned bid as proposed.
We have a first and a second?
Second.
Who was that?
Dan.
Dan.
Jan, would you take roll call vote?
Dan Vincent.
Yes.
Bob Leahy.
Yes.
Jim Huffer.
Yes.
Tim Heiss.
Yes.
Chad Spence.
And the reason why I wanna delay it in the next year, because that way, Jack can spend the money. All right, council, you got anything else, Jan?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
I have, we're gonna have to do additional preparations. In other words, ask for more money for some of the line items. We don't have enough money to cover some expenses, so that'll be done next week. And I'll give you more information on that, I just want you to be aware of that, that it's in there. And I already put a notice in the paper, so we have to do it the next, not next week, the next meeting.
So, basically, it's just for some of the new members, it'll be, it's an add and delete, moving some of the money around, or also just adding additional budget?
It's just adding, I mean, the funds there, what it is, it's more, we spent more than, is in the budget.
Okay.
We budgeted, so we have to approve those additional expenditures.
And is there some areas where we didn't spend at all?
Yes, but I don't have a list of those.
I'm just trying to educate you.
Sorry, yeah, but I don't have a list of those.
Okay, no, that's fine. So, we're basically moving money around. And we also have a fund, it's called the Rainy Day Fund. There's multiple money that gets, we can keep it back just in case, you know, we either overspend or have a disaster of some sort, so we're covered for that. Council members, Dan, do you have anything?
Oh, yeah, evidently a letter was sent, a letter was sent to Moat Farm Service.
Yes.
The city, I guess, I don't, it's, you know, Union City, Indiana, joined the movement. It's, I think, the same letter we got in our water bills.
Okay.
And there was evidently a message at the bottom accusing of them of being negative and not doing enough for their community and.
Well, what's it exactly say, just?
"Please stop your negativity until you all give 16 years of your life to make your community better for your kids and grandkids."
Okay.
And it's signed a frustrated citizen, but evidently Mr. Moat wasn't, or it was actually addressed to all, or in care of all three employees, says Mark, Scott, and Pruitt.
Okay, imagine that.
Imagine that, I can't imagine that.
Yeah. What's the matter with the letter?
The letter? I'm not sure there's anything wrong with the letter, we've all read it. It was all sent out through water bills, I mean, that's, it's the part at the bottom of accusing them not doing enough. Being negative and not doing enough.
It's social media, I tell you, get people riled up out there.
Social media.
Yeah, I'll be darned.
I don't know what you're talking about, social media.
Well, Facebook, or whatever else it's out there.
This isn't Facebook, this is a letter, what are you talking about?
Yeah, that's where it's coming from.
Yeah, that's probably where it's coming from.
What's coming from, this letter?
Yeah.
No, this letter's got the.
The negativity.
Negativity.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know about that.
Dan, you know what happens during elections? People say stuff that they try to get people riled up about. I think that was probably to address the negativity. Imagine that.
What negativity? What are you talking about?
Dan, I think, if you wanna keep on talking about it, go right ahead. But I think that that letter pretty much explained what's taken place in the last 16 years.
Well, I suppose that's true, but the accusation that they've never done anything.
I don't think it said that.
Who?
Well, it says until you all give 16 years of your life to make your community better. And I think Mr. Scott Byram gave an awful lot of years donating his time with no compensation, for years. And it doesn't give, the bottom line is, everybody has the right to their opinion, right? So, why is the city sending them a letter?
The city didn't send that, it's a concerned citizen.
Oh, a concerned citizen.
Yeah, imagine that.
And we don't know who that concerned citizen is?
I said, anybody that doesn't resign their letter or tell who they are, I'm really.
They did tell who they were.
Oh, okay, who wrote that bottom letter?
Brian's wife, Peachey.
Imagine that.
I can't imagine that. I can't imagine, not only, the letter looks like it come from the city, right? That's what it looks like.
No, that letter went to every household in Union City that gets.
I know, but this one was sent specifically to a business outside the city limits that Mark Moat.
Dan, you know what happens on Facebook, you know, stuff that gets.
I'm not gonna attribute this to Facebook.
Dan.
I'm sorry, this is over the line. This is a reflection on this council. This says, "Union City, join the movement," it's like the letter headed to top of everything.
Every household got one of those.
I know they did, but they didn't have this message at the bottom of it, did they?
Well, that message is obviously not from the city. I mean, it's, it's a handwritten message at the bottom.
Is there things posted on Facebook that you don't like?
I don't, it's, it's not.
No, that's a question, I'm directing right to you right now.
Sure, there's lots of things I don't like.
And would you like to get it corrected at times?
You cannot debate on Facebook, it's for shallow swimmers.
That's the reason.
It's for shallow swimmers. And if someone's getting offended by something that's been said on Facebook to the point that they're sending a letter that looks like it came from the city.
No, it doesn't.
It's got the city letterhead on it right there, "Union City, join the movement." So, that says what, "Those five guys got together and said, 'Somebody send a letter,' here it is." Also, what you're saying is someone just took the letter they got in the water bill and sent it?
Could I read that?
Read what?
Let me read it to people, let's talk about.
The letter?
Yeah.
No, 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 we don't need to read about the letter, we're not gonna deflect away from this being sent to a business outside the city limits accusing individuals of never doing anything for their community. I mean, volunteering, not doing something for 16 years with compensation.
It's not what it says.
It has nothing.
It's not what it says.
Oh, Tim has a copy of it.
Yeah.
Oh, no, so there's already been a conversation in the defense bill before I ever brought this up.
No.
No.
Scott brought this to me today.
Scott Byram?
Yes.
And your conversation was of the same sort to say?
Well, I didn't, I didn't say that.
What did Scott have to say about it? He wasn't happy, was he?
He wasn't happy.
Because of all the years he volunteered his help, did he even mention that to you?
I said, I don't know what it was.
You should've known that, you was around.
I did, I didn't write it.
I didn't say you wrote it.
Not my job to defend it.
Did you defend it?
I didn't, I didn't condemn it, because I know what's.
You knew who did it, too, right?
Maybe you're not aware of something that was.
And you knew who wrote it, right? You knew who wrote it.
I didn't know until, until after I was told.
But you knew now, before I just told who wrote it.
I knew after I talked to Scott.
So, yeah, you knew who wrote it, so Brian knew who wrote it.
I, I don't.
You don't think that's inappropriate?
If you read this letter.
Oh, I know, it's a glowing expose of all the accomplishments that you've had, now that's 16 years.
Absolutely not, Dan.
It's not all of it, you're right.
Dan, this is thanking people for what's taken place.
Okay, fine.
It's thanking people what.
Okay, fine, fine. Why the message at the bottom of the letter sent to a business outside of the community?
Dan, you have anything else that's worthwhile talking about?
Okay, yeah, I do, what's the status on the consultant getting our money back from Robbie?
Dan, as we told you for the umpteen time.
Umpteen, we talked about it once, Brian.
It was sent, they are set up to do it whenever the time.
Has it been discussed again, has it, council?
Yes.
I mean, once, at council meeting?
Once.
Once, that, do you remember, the night I asked?
No, I wasn't here the first night, yeah.
Didn't get the name of the consultant anyway.
Kenneth?
Kenneth.
Kenneth.
Is the consultant you hired to get our money back from Robbie?
They are not to get the money back, they are to audit their books.
They are, they audit.
Dan, how long have you been on council? Don't you realize the process of what things do take place?
I know the process, Brian, I know the process, and so do you.
I think you know your golf card.
So, you gain your plan of what's going on.
Excuse me?
There is no excuse for it.
Dan, there is no, there is no game.
You come in here with a pack of lies, Brian, and we give that fellow $600,000. And here we are, three years later, and everything that.
Jan, how much money?
None of it. We got $600,000 from the county.
$600,000, but it's.
Oh, then we jumble it up, because we gave him $350,000, we gave him $250,000, and he got $250,000, and they got, yeah, I know, but we got $600,000 to fund this project.
So, are you?
From the county.
So, are you making insinuation that you don't think that Rob Lichtenstein intends to pay back the loan?
Insinuation?
Yeah.
No, I'm insinuating that you have no intent of trying to get back the money. That's what I'm insinuating.
Okay, Dan, I will tell, I will speak to that.
Good.
Because I emailed Kenneth Consulting with the information that Brian had me, that we, you know, the loan and all that, all the agreements.
The loan, the contract, promissory.
Everything.
And Kenneth said, "What about that?"
And they're gonna take care of it.
They're reviewing it?
No, they audit, they, there's a time limit behind this, Dan.
They don't get the money.
December 2019.
Yeah.
And it's, is it December 2019? That's, you have to audit at that date, after that date.
Audit what? The promise of 200 jobs? Audit what? What are we auditing?
What? Can somebody pull somebody's head out of their butt?
You have to, you have to.
Hey, yeah, we can probably go out here, you and I go out and have a conversation about that right now. You wanna pull my head out of my butt? Come on.
We need to.
Come on, we need to talk about that, okay?
Hey, we'll sit down.
We'll just, we'll just calm everything down, because this fellow knows exactly what I'm saying.
What fellow?
You, Mr. Mayor. You know darn good and well that that money's not coming back to the city.
Are you making accusations?
Accusations, I'm making a statement that that money will not come back to the city. And there'll not be 200 jobs out there at Robbie Lichtenstein's factory, there'll not be. There's like four now.
And that's the reason why.
Hey, I wouldn't be so adamant about this, Brian, except for the way you beat me up for six months trying to convince everybody that the project wasn't what I was telling, that it was what you were telling. And nothing happened for three years. I said, like I said, if you guys were right, everybody's gonna be happy. And, and you were wrong. And we don't wanna talk about getting the mon, yeah, you were wrong. Is there 200 jobs out there? Is there 100 jobs? Is there 90? You said you'd be happy with 50. We never got there.
How do you know?
How do I, I drive by out there all the time, count the cars in the parking lot. How hard is that?
Are you done now, Dan?
No.
Keep on going, Dan, we got, we got your camera.
Got the whole community watching you, that's right. So, what are the attempts that are being made? Auditing, auditing?
Well, you have to have.
I thought it was pretty cut and dried in the contract.
If you don't want an answer, then we don't need to respond.
You don't need to respond?
You don't, you don't, we can answer your question, we'll tell you what we're gonna do, and we've told you what we're gonna do, and you sit there and ignore it.
I don't ignore it, I just don't believe it.
Okay, then why do you ask?
Why do you ask?
Because I just wanted on record your comments and your indications that we're gonna get this money back. And we're not, you know we're not.
Okay.
$600,000 back to the county, actually should be going in our economic development coffers.
And actually, those are the kind of comments we're on social media that we're trying to dispel.
Oh, oh, that's negativity.
That's negativity.
Questioning, questioning you.
No, because some of those people.
Negativity.
Are you done?
No. What's the status on our windmills? Where are we going with those? And I hope you guys, the new guys, are writing this stuff down, because this is the stuff you're gonna have to face, this stuff you're gonna have to take care of. Or we can push for another four years, I don't know. Where are we on that? I know it's litigation, I know you don't wanna talk about it, but is it moving forward? Has there been any action?
As, as I discussed, I can't answer anything until it's out of litigation. And who brought us that, old business?
Who brought us what?
The wind turbines?
I don't know who brought it, who brought it?
As I explained to Tito when he asked.
What?
You were, you were sitting here that night.
Well, let's have it again, let's see if it matches up with the last time you said.
Anything else?
I don't know what the school has to do with our.
Anything else, Jan? Bobby, you got anything?
Nope.
Jim.
I'm done, I guess.
Chad?
Hey, aren't you glad?
Still waiting for you to pull my head out of my butt, too, by the way.
I don't think it'll come out.
I think, well, maybe you'd love the effort.
Um, given the day that it is.
Push me and tell me I don't belong here.
Um, just wanna appreciate veterans that've served, because we've had a number of folks in our community that served, and heard something on the radio the other day that was, and talked about our freedom of speech, it's not because of our politicians that we have freedom of speech, it's because of our veterans, you know, our ability to pray, it's not because of our pastors, it's because of our veterans, you know, and our freedom to, just all the various freedoms that we have, or thanks to our veterans, and appreciate that. And today, also, given the weather that we have outside, I was in a medical meeting today in Jay County, and I had a person come in and say, "Aren't you affiliated with the hometown Christmas lights, or the holiday lights," is what she said, with Union City. And I said, "Yes, actually we are." And she said, "That was cool," she said, "She saw something on Facebook." And then I had the very next employee come into the office, said the exact same thing, they'd never been to a community on Christmas. And so, before it was all said and done, the entire staff was, was gonna be, as they were planning and making a trip over to Union City, so the billboard off of I-70, that ran off county tourism, paid for in three days, had over 80,000 views. And that was on Facebook, so I don't know how many people drove by it, that's, it's real intention, it's real promotion, was, was obviously for the people driving by on I-70. And it's set up to, so people would pull right off of I-70 and down to 227, and then come into Union City. But it's actually got, it's paid for itself already, just through Facebook alone, so it's been phenomenal.
Is it a two-sided billboard?
It's not unfortunate, but it's facing.
Does it catch the westbound or eastbound?
It's facing westbound, so that way, people, as they pass it, well, it's, I'm sorry, facing eastbound, as you're headed westbound.
Towards 153?
Is that the exit?
That's the exit, Union City exit.
Yeah, the 227 exit, yeah, or, well, Highway 227.
So, it's catching the Ohio traffic, or anybody headed home, good deal.
Yeah, and so, it's, it's really in a good spot, and, and like I said, the press, we finally, for the first time in 14 years, Channel 7 reached out to us from Dayton, and Steve Baker, and wanting to come up and do a piece, so it's, it's catching fire, so it's awesome.
How about the flyover?
I don't, I've heard conflicting reports about that.
That's why I wonder, I have to.
So, the last I'd heard, the airport, the new airport board has said it's on.
It was just, Shelley had it on Facebook, didn't she?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're going based on what the airport board said, so, because I've heard, and in all defense of the county commissioner, in all defense of them, I've not heard anything from their mouth, all I've heard is that they, I've heard through the grapevine that they were not in support, I shouldn't say in support of it, they were kinda maybe grounding any type of activity like that for the time being, but I've not heard that from their mouths directly, so we're going on what I've heard directly from the airport board. So, anyway, hopefully, yes. Because that's always a.
Compensation issue, I don't think the airport thought they would be compensated by the powers.
Reach out and find out for sure. No presenters, old business, Brian, it's good to see you again.
I'm here.
So, 518, West Pearl sold that tax sale.
Oh, dear.
That was condemned. What does the county tell you when you, when you submit condemnation? Do they put any notification out for anybody?
No.
I mean.
Well, what? I've had two or three conversations with George Caster, and he was saying, well, he wants a list of condemnation, our condemned properties.
Okay.
But I don't know, and we have given it.
Yeah.
We've emailed those to him, but I don't know what notification, you know, if he's made some sort of notation. I mean, to me, it's just a courtesy that when people buy the tax sale certificate on these, and that's my question on this house, did, did the person just buy the tax sale certificate?
Yeah.
So, he's not actually got.
Correct.
You got, it can be redeemed.
It's in a year.
Which is concerning, because now it's, it goes out there and it's set in disrepair, just like the old AMP bill, which he acquired as well.
Right.
Right, and you say it's an out-of-towner?
Kokma, I believe.
Kokma, okay. I mean, I will get with George again and see if we can't figure out something where we can put some sort of a notation on these, so people know that, A, these are condemned properties that.
Yeah.
I'm bidding on, you know? Because as of right now, I don't think ever, they've ever, you know, not just for, not just for our community, but for Winchester.
For anybody.
Any condemned.
And it's, and the reason why the county, and I brought it up to him as well, but you'd almost, I don't know whether having the conversation with Meeks and saying, "Here's the deal."
Yeah.
I mean, it would, it would probably slow somebody up making that kind of purchase. This guy did, was blind purchase.
Probably sight unseen.
Sight unseen, so.
Yeah. A lot of them's on.
Yeah.
So.
There's a fellow down in Boca Raton that.
Yeah.
That does, he buys up a lot of these in Indiana.
Oh, you're being serious?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a guy down in Boca, I was involved in one where he bought a tax sale certificate for a house in Delaware County.
Oh, mercy.
He actually, we didn't think he'd actually come to the hearing, but he flew up from Boca Raton, and, you know.
Nicely tanned.
Yeah, absolutely.
Anything else?
I don't have any.
Okay. We got ordinance number twenty nineteen dash thirteen, an ordinance for, uh, official salary, elected officials' salary ordinance for the first reading.
Should say second reading.
Yeah, thank you.
Is it second, is it first reading or second reading?
Second reading, yeah. Any questions from the council, if not, I entertain a motion?
I'll move, we approve ordinance two thousand nineteen dash thirteen, elected official salary ordinance on the second reading by title only.
Do we have a second?
I'll start.
James, take group call vote?
Dan Vincent?
Yes.
Bob Leahy?
Yes.
Jim Huffer?
Yes.
Tim Heiss?
Yes.
Chad Spence?
Yes.
Under new business, this is really discussion going back, now, Ryan, this is where we wanna get some information, thinking about this, maybe you can reach out to other communities, but taking some of these buildings that are condemned, they may be, if somebody would purchase, that, uh, they are purchased with an agreement with the city, uh, take a, a good example, we had a family come to the city and they wanted to give us their house. And the, the house on, on the taxes is probably about a thousand dollars a year. Having them, they're saying they're gonna spend thirty-five thousand, forty thousand to fix up the house, they're gonna go to George Cash, they're sitting down with him, cap the taxes at a thousand, and once they get all the work done, George will come in and inspect them, hey, they did underwork, now the house is worth instead of, you know, you know, whatever it is.
Twenty thousand.
Yeah, now, now it's.
Fifty thousand.
It should be whatever now, so that they get a break for five years on their assessment. So the city reimburses them, say, we'll just throw a figure, say it's for five years, we, we reimburse them and give them five thousand dollars to go to rehabilitate the bill, the house, but at the same time, they have to sign a, um, let me figure it, uh, bond for fifteen, or whatever the number is, and that, you know, that gets our five thousand dollars back, and if they don't fulfill the contract, it's another ten thousand to demo the property.
Like a promissory, no?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So, so it's a performance bond, basically.
Yeah, good idea. So it, it, and, uh, some contractors are expressing interest in this, we're kinda floated around, that, uh, in the, you know, and even private citizens. So instead of tearing some of these buildings down or leaving them set vacant for so long, when now they become even more deteriorated, like.
I can reach out through.
See if there's any, I think Winchester had something like this.
Okay.
And I think Greenville does, and I, but if you can reach out on the list, or, uh, have you, any English wanna add to that?
Well, yeah, like I say, there's, this one house that he's speaking of, uh, it came to the attention of a contractor, and he's, uh, got family involved that, that like to do an investment property, and they're, they're tentatively agreed to, to take this house for a dollar purchase and, and rehab it, and I think we can offer some real incentive, especially when you take into consider that a house that's, you know, costs us anywhere from eight thousand to twenty thousand dollars to demo, uh, and, and then you have an empty lot that we have to dispose of, and, and.
Right.
Uh, so you have nothing, so it's just another, another empty lot with little or no, you know, with no, hardly any assessment, as opposed to.
Rehabilitated home.
Rehabilitated home, and, and there's home, we have homes that are, uh, that are beyond that, beyond that work, and I, I'll, I'll use Herman Cain's phrase for a different purpose, of save the savable, uh, we've had some homes at times that, that questioned whether maybe they were, were savable, that had been demoed, demolished because of the circumstances, and, and, uh, possible that if we can save a few of these homes, and, and I, and it's, it's not, it's not a do-all, cure-all thing, it's not gonna be applicable to, to every house, or even maybe, maybe not a large number of houses, but just another tool that we can use to, to affect a few homes, and, and put that together with other ways we deal with this, and.
And we, we want it to not, it cannot be a rental property.
Yeah, that's more.
It has to be.
Single-family dwelling or a single-family home. Yeah, owner-occupied home, yeah.
Did we institute the service fee for sewage connections on all of these bankrupt?
We did that a long time ago.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah. And.
Any trouble collecting those fees from the out-of-town landlords?
Yeah.
They just don't pay them, just like they don't pay their rental bills?
Some pay, so don't, so what, probably the only ones that don't.
So they give you something to work with?
Yeah. I'll get to work on that. I mean, it's really a great idea, I mean, you'd like to see what these.
Oh, yeah.
Especially these beautiful.
Older, huh?
Yeah.
And then actually, this one is, that, uh, it's, it's, uh, well, it's housed on Howard Street that they go to home, so. Chad, I don't think that the next council. Any visitors wishing to, uh, address the council?
Run down, it's eight working.
Next, uh, council meeting is Monday, November the twenty-fifth at six P M, and Water Works is at one P M, I entertain a motion for adjournment.
Move.
First or a second?
I'll second.
All those favorites in this thing, aye?
All right.
Me get your.